Whether the United States of America. A true republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
And Jennifer, we have a roll call.
Bob Williams. Eric Key.
Here.
Jared. Paul Dial. Will Lake.
Here.
Brain Thomas.
Here.
Mark Dan. Doug Simmons. Juan Jones.
Here.
All right, I believe that still constitutes. And I know Randy, this gentleman here, I don't know.
I'm Joey with a chamber. Yeah, I'm the executive director of the local chamber promise. Um, it will be me until further notice, but more than likely will change in the next two or three months. The membership representative of the board.
If you might know that for a roll call next time. Yeah, I know Randy. Are you, are you gonna be the normal from the college?
Yeah.
Good. Well, apparently they, they knew that because they had him on the roll.
We just, we just added, it was, we ad libbed it this morning. But um, yeah, with Mr. McKee retiring last month, uh, the college has designated Mr. Thomas as their representative of the board.
Good.
So until further notice, he'll be joining us.
Do we have any additions or deletions to the minute or agenda? None? All right, we'll move right on forward then. First item action is approval of the minutes of the board meeting of June eighth. Anybody had time to look over the? Minutes? Yeah, we got, we got five. So. Have a motion? Everybody want to second that motion? Motion is a second, all in favor? Uh, any opposed, same time? Motion carried. All right. Board of County Commissioners approve EDAB's recommendation regarding county on six and a half acre parcel. For those of you that weren't here, that's the expansion for millennium. Board, we, we recommended, board commissioners approved, so that's a, that's fine. Uh, Millennium's done a great job while they've been here, we appreciate them. Board of County Commissioners request a draft agreement with C-PACE. What would that be, Jennifer?
So our last board meeting, if you, if you will recall, board, um, we had a gentleman from the PACE program, actually had a couple of gentlemen. One presented the property assessed. Energy efficient uh, funding program for commercial, one talked primarily about residential. Quite a bit of debate and discussion went on in the, the group about it, but it was recommended to take it to the um, Board of County Commissioners for their review. Um, the, the commissioners did decide to move forward with drafting an agreement for the commercial. Pace allowing businesses to take advantage of that. So county attorney is currently in the process of, of drafting what that agreement looks like. There's so many components of that that'll be discussed as we go along. Um, what could be included, is it new construction, is it existing? There's many different components to that, so that, that agreement is being drafted now. Um, they did decide to hold off on the residential uh, component of pace for the moment. So um, there's several counties around us that currently have that in place. They decided to let those counties, you know, implement that pro, that program for a, a year or two to see how that works there before rolling it out here. Um, there's quite a bit of concern or, or um, questions regarding the, the consumer protections involved in that. So they decided to, to hold off on residential for now. So just wanted to let this board know that your recommendation went forward to be a system. Yes.
The board, um, recommend the attorney to um, do it with the committee. It's not all committee, it's just a committee specifically so that the tax. Uh, planner and the property researcher, we have input into the agenda.
Good idea.
I think if this board wants to suggest somebody to the county attorney to add their input, you'd have to accept.
Um, I think the board made a correct decision, both knock on the residential. This, for those, those who weren't here, the, uh, presentation on this program, there was a lot of concern on our board, uh, especially on the residential end, that we don't want to put a vehicle in place in this county that would prey on unsuspecting homeowners. Uh, some people don't quite understand the ramifications of financing and make things really easy. I, I saw danger in it. This board moved it forward to the county commissioners because it was obvious the county commissioners wanted it. And uh, we also moved it forward with caveats that be very cautious with it. And, and do your due diligence and find out. I'm glad to hear that they are gonna let someone else be the beta program on the residential. And then we can see the ins and outs of that. Commercial's a different deal, um. Actually, I think we have someone uh, interested in the area that's interested in that particular program. Business is business, you, you uh, you do your financing where you can get the best results for yourself and you make those decisions. Good chance you're not gonna lose your home over it. Anyway, so Joel is working on the uh.
The committee for, yes.
For us to look at, okay.
I have a question, uh, do you know what other counties are affiliated by the residential side? Do we have both lists?
Um, I, off the top of my head, I, I believe Leon County. Um, do you recall David, I know Leon County.
We can get you a list, I don't know.
Yeah, there's.
It's not just counties, there's cities that do it as well.
Yes.
So the whole list.
I guess my, my, my question was that apparently we need to run times that careers is for the crowd.
I, I don't think North Central have very much going on.
Most of us, I think, was Nassau County.
They seem to be around the globe.
Okay. Nassau, most of us, we'd be Nassau County.
I'll follow up and, and send an email out to the board with that information.
Yeah, just so y'all know that uh, with career source, we uh, we oversee long the union, we have some basic towns. We have uh, interest in uh, developing workforce talent in Ohio, Ohio, Ohio.
Um, yeah, and I think the commercial side would fall in line with y'all's interest to employees and work. Back to um, Mr. Kraus's suggestion, is there a board member that would like to be involved in the uh, committee meetings? On the pace program?
We don't already own it?
No, we do not.
I'll, I'll volunteer.
Would you do that? That's wonderful. Because there's no place for me to back up to.
Yeah, um. I, I don't believe he started the forming the committee yet, um, but I'll, I'll have Joel follow up with that too.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right. Yes, I'm gonna refer Jennifer on this next one.
So the next couple of items um, on your agenda, one of the uh, the efforts that we're working on is marketing, broadcasting, getting our information out there about Columbia County. Um, it's important that um, we, our, our county, our constituents, our commissioners, understand that we don't just market the industrial park. We're not just the North Florida mega industrial park, there's so much more to Columbia County. So many different areas of the county that we're marketing and actually have projects in all of those. So one of the, the um, the efforts of this office is how do we market ourselves in a, in a um, much broader fashion? So a couple of things that, that I'm looking into that I wanted to share with this board today. This particular first program, I'm plugged with it, so I have to release here, um, so you can explore at your leisure. But I wanted to introduce you to um, Co-Act Associates. So this is a business growth development company. Um, really they're based out of Ohio, however, it's a small team that will um, come together and, and support our efforts here. The thing that I wanted to show you or share with you is this. So what Co-Act brings to the table is um, where some of the, the larger counties have a team of, of folks in their economic development office. Being a smaller county, we don't necessarily have all those resources. So this group have, this, this team is, has perfected um, kind of the management style or the management, the growth and development services in one office. They have someone for each facet of this business. So what they'll do is they'll start out, um, here where it says strategy. They'll come down, um, their core team, they'll spend the day here. And uh, we'll talk about our strategic plan, our targeted industries, the uh, the areas that we'd like to, to see growth. Um, we'll go around and we'll spend time driving the county, going to the different interchanges, showing them our assets. So they really spend the day getting to know Columbia County, right? So from there, they go back and they start researching companies that have um, the desire to expand, develop, move home offices, move headquarters, move, you know, whatever the case may be. They start looking into these companies who have a desire to build or expand into an area um, such as ours, that we can support the workforce, that we have the infrastructure that they need, the facilities. And this is anything from our distribution to, you know, headquartered offices, to manufacturing, anything in between, right? So from that research, then they start designing the outreach information. So they'll package, they'll market, they'll put together this information, um, direct mail a lot of the times. So they'll, they'll get this information together, it's all about Columbia County, it's how we present it. Nothing, by the way, leaves or, or goes out without our approval. So they don't just randomly send information, it has to be approved first. So once that's designed, then they send this information out to the prospect. To the company, to whomever it is. From that point, um, it kinda, it, it, it drifts over to our office. So at this point, we take over. They never make direct contact, it's not Co-Act talking to a company on behalf of Columbia County. They're doing the legwork, they're doing the building, the, the supporting information, the contact information, the marketing material, that kind of thing, based on our interactions and our input. Um, they'll build this, they'll, they'll prepare it, they'll reach out, make the initial contact. And then send me the information, say, hey, this is the company follow up. So at that point, it becomes, you know, we, we like to say it's my baby, I'm gonna rock it. From, from here, it's, it's my job to reach out to this company, follow up, make a proposal, get them, get them interested and familiar with Columbia County on a personal level. And cultivate that relationship to the point of a project. So this group does what I would love to do if there was eight of me. But there's not, so um, the interesting thing about Co-Act, what they do, again, i- it's not, they're, they're based in Ohio, it's a small group, they're specialized in each field. But they, they also bring to the table. All of this, marketing research, website, strategy design, brand design, online marketing. So, sorry, it's taking a second to catch up. All right, well, I will.
I, I got a question while you were.
Yes.
So um, um, this company. I mean, how many, if, if, if. The contacts that we're making now, would you project the, the rate of increase would be in greater more contacts? I mean, if, if, if you, would you think, yeah, how many more contacts?
I think it's really significant. Um, I, I, because they, they have a staff dedicated to just that. So based on, on the industries that we're looking at, and that's what I really like about it, it's a personalized approach. So in addition to you that the day that they come down and they spend really getting to know us, um, following that every two weeks, we have a, a debrief session, if you will. They have a certain terminology that they use, but we have a call set up for every two weeks following that to review the contacts that were made and then strategize how we're gonna do the next two weeks. And then once a quarter, they come down and we have that, that session in person to, to, to debrief the entire thing, so. Um, the other, other positive or the other, other good thing about this is I'm not locked into an annual contract with these, these guys, it's a month to month contract. Um, so we could try them out, if it doesn't work, then I'm not obligated for any length of time. Um, so what I would propose to this board, or what I would, I would like your, your support in is to enter into this contract with them on a, about a three month basis. And at our first quarterly event, I would like to have them present to you and give you the feedback on what we've accomplished in that quarter. At that point, if, if you as a board think it's something valuable, we can move forward, then we'll look at a longer term prospect. But it's something that I'd really like to try to, to get more marketing, get our name out there a little bit more.
First question I'd have is, what is the call?
It, it's uh, fifty-two hundred dollars a month.
And their focus is branding?
Uh, their focus is outreach, it's marketing and expansion. They also have um, in their office, the ability to do drone photos. Um, you know, they, they have a, a photographer on staff, they've got marketing on staff. All of this is inclusive in that fifty-two hundred dollar price.
But they don't reach out to anyone?
Not personally, they set up the contact for me to reach out to.
But basically, they're, they're, they're both building a brand and telling you how to, how to market it.
Giving me an option over it, yes.
We see, we see the mega park referred to as just that. Not necessarily tied to Columbia County in the statewide mentioning of it. Now, if you, if you're applying or, or you come, you, you know where the location is. But you do hear it referred to as the mega park, not Columbia County mega park or anything like that, but I, I could see the, the branding side of this, fifty-two hundred dollars a month is, is a good bit of money to uh, to sample them, do we have it in the budget?
I do, yes.
Take your feedback on that.
Successes in other cities comparable to us, like if there's some portfolio of market they.
There is, and um, the link on the website, if you wanted to dig into that, they do have a, a couple of links there of similar um, economic development. You know, adventures that they've gone into. Um, they also assist with school, universities, I mean, there's a, a broad spectrum of, of um, entities that they assist with, but there, there are several examples of how they've gone in and assisted economic development organizations.
Did we seek them out?
No, actually, he uh, he called. Um, normally I, I uh, don't put a lot of stock in, into those blind sales calls. Um, I did uh, did ask around to several of the consultants and site selectors that we've used through other organizations. Um, and, and I'll be, I'll be frank, none of them have worked with them directly. However, they are intrigued by the, the prospect, it's kind of a new idea of how to, to assist an economic development organization. There's not a, a whole lot of organizations or groups that do exactly what Co-Act does. There's a lot of lead generation um, companies out there, but that's not what this group does. It's more of a customized um, personal approach, essentially, it's just expanding my office.
Is that fifty-two hundred dollars all in place?
Yes.
If somebody opens their door, we get another fee at the end of it?
No, fifty-two hundred dollars, flat fee, um, it, it's everything, the marketing, the, you know, if we decided to rebrand the website, any of the drone photos, all of that, all of that is included into that, that one cost.
And how much time will this fee have to use so you can just be in front of the face of the customer?
Um, significant, yeah, a- and the other part of that is um, the time that I don't have now to, to spend looking for those companies. Um, that's another aspect they give that um, I, I think is, is hugely beneficial. Um, there's, there's a significant amount of companies out there that, that are, have, have thought about, but they're not exactly sure if they're ready to expand. Getting a, a knock on the door and saying, hey, look, come look at us, may be what they need to move forward. Unfortunately, right now, I just don't have the bandwidth to do that, and they would allow for that.
What, what are we spending now in marketing?
Um. I, I, it's not significant because most of the marketing efforts are, are done either directly from my office or through grant. Um, grant funded projects. Uh, this came to me at a time where those grants that I normally would use for marketing are, are not in, are not open cycles right now, so that's why I'm, I'm. And I, a- again, to, to Mr. Key's point, we do have the money in the budget because we, you know, haven't spent nearly, you know, what we in budgeted for certain items this year. So it's a simple budget amendment to move things from, you know, a, an office supply account to a marketing account, things like that. So I wouldn't have to pull it out of reserves or anything, just from other accounts we haven't used.
I guess my next question would be, is there any comparable company with a track record that is well known of a good comparable cost or?
Not that I've found. Yeah. It, like I said, it's, it's kind of a unique service that they offer. Um, most, you know, most people, when, most of the, the other people in the industry that I've talked to, the first thing they think is, is this a lead generation firm? And it's not. It, it's a small component of what they do and it's not a generic. Um, with lead generations, it's kind of a, a cold call, just throwing it out there for everybody, this is a very personalized, custom approach. It's, so it's, it's quite different than just, you know, throwing a whole handful of spaghetti at the wall. We're actually mixing the pot purposely now.
David, do you have any input?
Do we also work with anybody else on board?
They're not, no. Now, I will say that our um, uh, North Florida Economic Development Partnership that we're a part of, I've spoken with them about this company. They weren't familiar, but they're interested. So if we're a success story, it's something that they would definitely explore. But um, I, I know we don't like being guinea pigs, but in my opinion, this is, is one of those times where it's worth it.
Pleasure to the board.
In my, in my opinion, I think it's uh, sounds like something we should entertain. And you've done your due diligence in terms of keeping the cost alive, and it sounds like it uh, yeah, free of some of your time to, to.
I agree along those lines, it's uh, support for the staff is, is important, we put a lot of confidence in you coming to us with a concept like this, so uh, we try you out too. My only concern with, with, with Columbia County, and it's, it's right back to the bare basics, I mean, we can brand and we can, we already have just geographically a, a, an area that people are gonna look at. So a little bit of, of marketing work toward that certainly can't hurt anything, and one good prospect would pay this company for a long time, but are we ready to entertain these people that have interest in Columbia County? I know the mega parks making progress. Uh, we're still, as far as I know, we're still pretty far off on the east wastewater treatment facility. Um, that's a major component to expand into anybody out there, I don't know. We don't have a city representative here, so I don't know how the gas looks for those areas, some of those industries use a lot of gas. And uh, there's more than just power and water when it comes to entertaining these multimillion dollar customers.
Um, to answer some of your questions, the um, sewer plant, obviously, when we went out to RFE, had zero respondents. We have gone out for looking for a construction manager at risk. We have four respondents and we're gonna evaluate which of those four next week in terms of what we want to select, take it to the board in August. So we will have a construction manager first on the sewer plant, so be able to get moving forward on that, hopefully mid-August. Um, Jennifer, can I update you on the status of the gas study, which is nearing completion?
Yes.
Good.
So, just wanna give you that information.
Uh, that, I would tend to agree with Mr. Jones, and I think it's, I think it's worth giving it a shot, see what they do for us. Pleasure to the board, I hear a motion.
Um, motion to move forward with the three month trial period of Jennifer and.
Second. I'll second the motion. All in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Don't make it so hard on the next one.
No, so the, the next one is um, uh, Enterprise Florida, I think most of us are familiar with, they're the economic development arm of the state of Florida, um, essentially. So it's a, a public private entity that works with the state as far as economic development goes. Um, Enterprise Florida has branched out their own marketing division, and that is, is uh, Team Florida. So um, what you see here is essentially what Team Florida is gonna bring to the table is representation of us as part of Florida's efforts to, to, to grow our manufacturing base, if you will. Um, so it's, it's not just about tourism and hospitality, um, you know, it's adding manufacturing and distribution because of our um, logistics here. So what Team Florida brings to the table is there's multiple conferences that they participate in throughout the year that if for some reason, um, we don't attend, maybe it's something in Texas, maybe it's something that doesn't fit our budget, maybe it's just a, a conflict, whatever it may be. Team Florida still represents us. So um, as part of that marketing, they also do some social media stuff, LinkedIn, broadcasting, things like that. Um, again, it's just a part of Enterprise Florida and their new outreach program. So um, as that, it was more of just a, a notification to this board that we are now members of Team Florida. So you may start seeing more advertisement in your LinkedIn profiles coming through with Columbia County as we, we start building that with them. Um, moving down the list, the next item, uh, ICMA marketing video, something I wanted to bring to your attention that we, um, David received a phone call from ICMA, which is the International City and County Managers Association. Um, they have an annual meeting in September in Ohio, I wanna say Toledo, Ohio, but um, it's in Ohio, they asked if Columbia County would be interested in um, a marketing video. So there are themes throughout the con, the, the conference, and it's a week long conference. Um, resiliency, partnership, teamwork, that kind of thing, and as they start building their agendas, they start looking out to communities across the, the country that support their themes, and they've reached out to David to ask if we would be interested in participating. So essentially, what they do is they'll come in, um, spend the day shooting footage of not just economic development or our projects, but um, throughout the county, um, you know, our, our tourist development group, businesses, industries, county, city government, pretty much everything. Um, they'll shoot this entire day foot of footage and give us uh, about a two hour uncut roll of, of information, right? From that footage, they build a five minute video, which will be highlighted during the conference in September. Um, beyond that, there's a minute long video that they'll show in um, places where people congregate. So like the reception area, the, the check-in area, things like that. um, places where people congregate. So like the reception area, the, the check-in area, things like that. And they go one step further at ICMA. So for those of you who've been to conferences, you know, when you get, get to your hotel and you check in, there's always that information channel. Well, now, um, they will have a fifteen-second commercial for Columbia County on their information channel at the hotel as well. So um, all of this is in, in, inclusive in this. Um, we own the rights and we own the material, so all of the video that they, they shoot will have access to. So even if it's um, not the five-minute video, if there's something else that we want to highlight and use throughout the county and city, we can do that. Um, just wanted to bring that to your attention because there's only sixteen entities in the country that they're highlighting, and we're one of those. So it's a, a pretty significant opportunity that they reached out to David for. So we're working um, with that team. I believe we'll have someone come down in August to shoot the, the video, and then uh, it'll be ready by the end of August, beginning of September um, for them, and after that, we'll have it to share.
That would be something you'd work with Coact on?
Nope, that's completely different. So ICMA, um, just, they have their own, they, they've been doing this for many years. So they have their own marketing and TV team that shoot this video year in and year out. So they'll, they'll handle the production of all of that.
Coact have some sort of an opinion on that?
Nope, no, no. Two totally different, independent, um.
Seemed to tie up close together to me.
It, it did. Uh, just, just uh, good, good timing, I guess.
You don't want two things going on and working.
Well, the ICMA is, is a one-time event. Coact is something that we'll continue to build. It's a.
I would assume Coact would be very happy with it, but.
I was gonna say, if we, I think we underwrites that footage, that's something we can turn over to Coact.
Yes. Yeah, and they do have a um, digital video team on staff that could edit and, you know, alter and do what they, you know, whatever we need to do with that.
It's, it's piecemeal. You pay as you go. Pay for the shooting.
Um, with, with Coact, no, that's the, the.
Uh, Coact.
ICMA?
Yes.
Um, it's, it's uh.
We own the materials, so obviously we're paying for it when they shoot it.
Yeah.
Any editing they do or changes.
Um, last thing that, that are on, on the uh, the list for discussion items. Um, we've been given an opportunity through Vision First Advisors to host what we're calling an Economic Development Masters Class. So a couple of months back, we had a, a session with Chad Chancellor from the Next Move Group. Um, it, it's similar to that. However, this particular class will be catered towards Columbia County. What Columbia County can offer, how we best position Columbia County um, from the various positions with either elected officials, um, appointed or volunteer boards. Um, how, how everybody plays into that. So it's taking um, the information we learned from Chad and the Next Move Group and, and personalizing it to us. So in, in the reason I say that is Vision First Advisors, Grace Whoop and Griff Salmon are, are two individuals who we've worked with through the Warehouser team at the industrial park for quite some time, so they're very familiar with everything um, about Columbia County, not just the east side of town. Um, but they have very extensive backgrounds in development and um, understanding what it takes to attract the manufacturing industries and the businesses that we're really looking for. Um, Grace Whoop, for example, was the Secretary of Commerce under Rick Scott um, while he was in office as governor. So there's a lot of experience there that we could gain and a lot of information and insight that um, they, they've offered to come in, and this is also a follow-up to understanding our agreement with Warehouser at the industrial park, that economic, or the memorandum of understanding, understanding who, the, the stakeholders in that agreement, who owns what and how we, how we you, use that moving forward. Um, so there's several components to this class that we're going to put together, but we're looking to do this um, fairly early in August. Um, I've talked to Commissioner Williams about possibly utilizing our next Economic Development Advisory Board meeting as the, uh, the timing for that, and uh, would like your thoughts on that, if, if that's something we would like to do next month during this time slot, or do we want to schedule this separately? Um, I'm anticipating it being probably about a two-to-three hour uh, course, or class, if you will, discussion, but very worth the time. So thoughts from the board on that?
Is that what we do with Chad?
No, we scheduled that on a separate, totally different, yeah.
I'm probably doing it on the same day.
My thoughts on that is education is powerful. But I would schedule it separate from these meetings.
Sounds good. Do it in conjunction with the meeting.
All right. I will follow up with uh, with the board, and it will be advertised, um, since I anticipate um, more than one commissioner being here. For that, it will be an advertised meeting. Uh, we're looking at it as a workshop, if you will. All right, just a couple of updates um, regarding grants and projects. So um, you may have seen the uh, announcement for the sixty-five thousand dollar grant that we were awarded for. It's a community planning technical assistance grant through the state DEO. This will be focused on the north side of town. Um, e- essentially, it's a pre-development plan, if you will. Um, it, it's the, the start. We've, we've talked a lot about the, the whole Bell Road corridor and getting it in line with um, our, our zoning and ex- extending the designated urban development areas, so that allows for development in that area to be a, a much smoother process. Um, the pre-development plan is the first step to that. So what this does is, is allows us to um, essentially get with all of those property owners, understanding what their thoughts for that, that property and development is, ensuring that it's in line with either the existing zoning or the future land use. Um, and, and starting the process to get that entire corridor um, zoned where it needs to be and, and sites identified, understanding where the, the wetlands could be, starting some phase-one due diligence to, to understand where they need to be delineated, where we can, you know, start actually identifying project sites. Um, as far as projects go, we're getting a significant amount of interest as far as distribution and even spec buildings. Um, this week alone, I've talked to two different developers who are looking to build spec warehouses or spec manufacturing facilities. Um, the, the Bell Road area is perfect for that right now. They've got the utilities in place. Water, sewer, gas, all of that is, is there. There's land available. Um, so this just expands the area, allowing for that development to, to happen a little, little easier. Um, so that sixty-five thousand will go towards a, a pre-development plan to start that corridor.
I have a question. I remember we were at the NFBD partnership, um, was it this month, right?
Yes, last month.
Last month. I noticed that, like, companies like Ranger, they moved into a spec building, so is that kind of more and more popular?
It, it is. Well, so I, I think the pandemic had a lot to do with that. Um, because companies who are intending on building had to, to kind of slow that down a little bit. Their need to expand didn't change. Their ability to get it constructed in that timeframe did. So now what they're doing is they're looking for available buildings. So um, and we've talked about that as, as a, um, a department. It, it's, it's a thin line between building it and it's sitting there for, you know, un, unused, or do we wait to build it till we have that, that company there? So the fact that we're getting interest from developers who are wanting to put their own money into this project to build it themselves tells me that there is interest out there and, and companies looking to lease a space. So.
When they identify uh, wetland use and stuff, do they do some bore sampling and stuff to give you some ideas what, what the?
Depends on how, um, I don't know that that, in the, the pre-development plan, it, it's more desktop review. Um, when we get into the phase two, they would do those type samplings.
All development right now is having a lot of trouble with stormwater retention, especially Columbia County. Um, it has a lot to do with the soil and the, and the water table in the area. So when you have wetlands, it doesn't necessarily mean, a wetland doesn't necessarily mean it's a great recharge area, because it could have a clay, clay base. So the water doesn't seep through to the aquifer. It has to run around the clay, maybe if it's a small area. But with bore sampling, they would be able to say, okay, well, approximately you're gonna need a half-acre retention pond or something like this. Basically, that's all they have to offer on stormwater runoff right now. Being able to hold pre-construction runoff. So uh, I know that district, we're having a lot of issues with developers wanting to develop, but they don't quite understand the, the soil that they're working with. You, you can build a, what you say, a retention pond that turns into a pond. You know, so that has no, no benefit to you. Once it fills up, it's full. It can't hold anything. And that's because of the clay base underneath it. It, it doesn't have any recovery.
That particular area I know pretty well. So one of the major problems out there is you got Fallon Creek, on the north side of Interstate Ten from Bell Road. Fallon Creek runs into a funnel. You can only pour so much water in a funnel, and it max up. So that's your primary drain to that whole area out there. So that's your big water issue for that area.
I just, I know that that's something that's uh, doesn't apply to the mega park because we're doing a septic system or wastewater treatment facility. But when you go to Bell Road Corridor, they're standalone areas. So to, to determine how much land you can develop, it would be good to know the type of soil that you're dealing with. Because when the company starts due to de- due diligence and they come to Swan River, and they're gonna go down, so now you're gonna need three acre, and you know, and they're paying fifty, sixty thousand dollars an acre, you know?
We got Warner to put in one. Especially Kelly put two sites in, two retention areas in for the road, and then Warner put a huge.
Fifteen acre.
See.
Very large retention pond out there.
Y- yeah. I mean, pre-planning's fine. Um, I'm just, I'm curious to know how much development can really be done out there feasibly without.
Well, and, and that's part of what this pre-development plan determines. So it's, and it takes into consideration not just the land itself, but the land owner and their intention for the property. So there's several components to that.
There's ways around it. It's, it's expensive, but you take like Chick-fil-A. If anybody's ever noticed, that's a huge parking lot, and there's no retention pond. So there's a big footprint of impervious area there. It's all underneath. They built chambers underneath it for the water. No evaporation, good recharge. It can be done, but it's expensive. But they wanted the parking. They, they didn't want to waste any land for, for retention.
And they use all of it.
And they use it all.
And then some. And then part of ninety at lunchtime.
And some of Burger King's.
I, I think they have their business model, yes. Uh, the, uh, the other item under grant updates, the legislative request, uh, you may have seen, um, the House and Senate released a hundred and seventy-five million for community projects. Um, this was after the governor's budget was signed. So our understanding of this is any project that did not go through is not eligible. So this would be new projects only. Um, we do know that kind of the, 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 the sweet spot for requests is, is right around a million dollars. So um, we, uh, Stosh, by the way, um, is, is out. He's, he's a new dad. So he's taken a couple of weeks off, enjoying his, his first-time dad status. Um, he, before he left, submitted a request for a million dollars for the Bell Road extension. We had previously requested that through Representative Dunn's office, and um, fortunately, they decided to not do any paving projects as community projects. So um, we were going back to the drawing board, looking at some grant opportunities when this, this uh, the money from the state was advertised. So um, we did ask for a million on that and um, should hear something back within the next month or so, but that did go through um, Representative Brandon's office to uh, the legislature. So it is a, a reviewed by committee and approved or denied there. Um, but I do know that they're not in entertaining any projects that were already um, turned down. So that, that opens the, the, the arena a bit for us. So we're still, still going forward with the Bell Road extension, um, just having to, to look at some alternative funding measures to get that done. Um, from a project update, just wanted to, to let this board know that um, even though we are in uncertain times as far as our economy goes, it, it hasn't slowed down um, the interest in Columbia County. So um, at any, any point in time, I have a, an ongoing list of projects that, that are still open, that I have not been, um, we've not been eliminated from. But I, I don't necessarily consider those active. The ones I consider active are the ones that I'm talking to on a regular basis, that I'm having communications with either the company, their consultants, or their representative, whatever it may be. So just as an update right now, we've got fourteen active projects at the industrial park. Um, four in the Bell Road area and, and uh, about four in other interchanges. So and from uh, um, understanding the, the types of projects that we're looking at in those areas, the industrial park tends to be the more um, heavy utility usage and almost always the rail requirement. Um, there, there are few rail-served sites outside of that in the county. However, we do have a few. So when projects come across that may lend to some of those other areas, and we do have rail available, we'll look there too. But uh, in the Bell Road area, that's, it's largely distribution. Um, that's companies coming in that, that want quick access to the interstate. And uh, so those types of projects, um, we're looking at there. The other interchanges, we've got a, um, some commercial and retail developments that are, are interested in both forty-seven, seventy-five, and in Ellisville that are very active projects. So just so this board knows, we are, are working on all areas of the county, not just uh, on the east side. So any, any questions or uh, any information that I can provide there, let me know.
Is there uh, anyone actively looking at the southeast corner, forty-seven, seventy-five?
Um, not yet. So there, there has been some interest, and it's slowed down a bit. Um, the land owner there, I think, is, is um, they've submitted a, a request to change the floodplain line that has been approved. They're just waiting on the confirmation of that. So I think once that comes through, and that was part of the reason why we had a, um, a CDVG grant that we had, had acquired for that, that area to build out the rest of the, uh, the water and, and sewer to them. Um, we had to, to put that on hold until we could solidify a job provider for that. And in that interim, we, we learned that we also have to wait on FEMA to catch up. So we're just waiting on, on the paperwork, if you will. Um, it's, it's kind of why we haven't um, marketed that really heavily right now, because we're at the mercy of the federal government and their paperwork. So.
We're going to put that.
Yes.
Any other board comment? Can I open it to public comments? Visitors with us that have anything, any comment on coming events? None noted. I've asked Dale if he would, um, just give the board a quick uh, overview of the hospital authority right now with uh, all the mixed information there is out there. Could you kind of clarify some of that?
I don't exactly know what everybody's mental understanding is of hospital and current status. So some of this is redundant. All we are aware of, at least occurred back in two thousand twenty, the hospital authority lost a tenant for the hospital. All we are aware of, at least occurred back in two thousand twenty, the hospital authority lost a tenant for the hospital. The operator was Community Health Systems, referred to by the acronym CHS. They left citing that they were not financially, uh, stable and sufficient at that location. So the building become vacant at that point. Uh, the authority negotiated an end of lease with them by allowing them to pay the remainder of the lease, but of course they paid it in, uh, you know, with a future dollar deduction, that present bank. COVID hit. There was an issue with the authority itself and the constitution of the school that didn't have reform. Because the governor had not appointed a member at that time. So it kind of stayed stagnant. You could do what you could do, but you really didn't have all the tools in the toolbox. So once all that was passed, they finally got around to, uh, issuing a second RFP. They asked for interested providers, people interested in the building. When those were received, they divided them into two parts. One was the responses that actually wanted to use the hospital building itself. Now, understand that hospital building. It's a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. Parts of it were built in the nineteen sixties, all the way up through the early two thousands. So it's sort of a, a mixed building. It has a lot of older technology in it. It was able to operate to a great extent as a hospital, causing a lot of assistance in the grand part of the time. Hospitals in Florida are regulated by the Agency for Health Care Administration, AHA. And, uh, of course, uh, you know, you don't do anything in that land without AHA's approval. So, uh, whoever was going to take that building, particularly if they were going to reuse it as a hospital, was looking at a pretty large expenditure that somebody had to pay in order to do that. So these responses were, uh, they, they wanted to look at who would take the hospital first because the ancillary buildings are kind of easy in comparison. They're smaller, they're a little modern. People knock on the door, the authority won't prevent them now. So once you find out what you're going to do with the hospital building and how many of the ancillary buildings might need to go with it, the thought process was, hey, this will work itself out. Uh, of the three responses received that could use the entire hospital, uh, one of them was a company called Hope Bridges. Uh, Hope Bridges, to me, and this is my explanation of them, is really just a, a company that puts a deal together. In other words, they will go out and find users, find a, a solution for those users, try to put a deal together. And then there was the college, Florida Gateway College, who wanted to move all of their medical-related classes and facilities to that building to have a downtown location. And then Meridian Behavioral Healthcare, which is, of course, is a Molder County organization that deals with mental health, mental health issues, et cetera. They were looking for sort of an intake center for the region. All of those three groups that wanted the hospital presented to the authority, when it was all over said and done, any one of the three would take the building. The catch was is that depending on the entity, it was anywhere from eight to twelve million dollars in addition to the building. So it was like, okay, if the college wanted to use it, they wanted the building, twelve million dollars. Another user wanted eight, another user wanted ten. The trustees of the authority did not want to give money and the building. They did not feel that's what taxpayers wanted them to do. It's not what they felt like they should do, primarily because the money, which is your money, was generated for the purposes of healthcare and not for some of those other uses. So they actually began talking about what would it cost to raise the building. Let's take the building now. It's old. They're not going to have a hospital there. You can't find another use for it without subsidizing it heavily. We don't want it to become a blight on the face of the city. We just need to go. They, they were, they don't want to ride by there five years from now and be buying, growing up on it and just nice. Along that process, the question was asked of those three providers, look, is there under, is there any scenario you would take this building without a subsidy? And I think to some degree, all three of them said, yes, and here's what that scenario will be. But of those, the one that seemed to make the most sense and had the most chance of success was a component of what the Hope Bridges group was proposing, and that is be a transitional housing. And of course, they can substantiate if they have a contract with the VA. They can substantiate that there is a need for this. They can substantiate a lot of things. And so the due diligence is ongoing as we speak with them. Um, I know that they had state VA representatives here Monday. I know that they've got federal HUD coming in and federal HUD has to approve that space, things of that nature. But if all of that pans out, I can see a path where the trustees will more than likely give strong consideration to that proposal. So I would say right now that the odds are good that the hospital itself becomes a VA transitional housing facility, not operated by the authority, but through the contract. Now, having said that, we get to the other group of respondents. And, um, one of the, one of the statutory requirements of the authority is to provide medical care. And so that's important to the trustees. They've not forgotten that. But I think rather than a hospital, which you're probably going to be looking at, is more like a, this is my words, first-class emergency care center. Maybe if things get really lucky, you might have a standalone ER at some point. Much like you see Shen's bill that can have the hall or spring heal. You, you may, not immediately, but you may see that. Uh, there are some other medical-related uses that have expressed interest in those buildings. Some do like lab testing, imagery, that kind of stuff. I think you'll see a component of that. I also think that there are some legitimate, non-medical-related interest in the building, uh, primarily the county. Uh, the county is looking for space where the county and the city can do joint permitting. The county is looking at space to assist the Public County Public Health Unit that wants to do an expansion. And along with that, there comes an element of primary care as well as dental, which there is an interest in supporting that through the authority. Um, and I think we're in mid-July. I think there'll be a very clear picture here soon. They have a special meeting next week. They'll have another regular meeting the second Monday of August. And, uh, I think it's, it's going to start coming quickly. This is what's going to happen. And then it's just a matter of doing the steps necessary to ensure that that does happen. Now, the authority is a taxing entity. They are an independent taxing district. Uh, they have the right of gubernatorial point of doors, levy village. The village they levy for the prior two years, which covers the two years since the hospital left, has been one ten thousandths of one mill, point zero 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 one. Countywide, that generates three hundred dollars. So they're not trying to sit there and levy a village. They're basically operating off of the previous paid easement that I told you earlier came from the lease requirement and the lease settlement with CHS. Uh, you take that and you take what they already had reserved, the authority, your authority, you have about twenty-one million dollars of liquid cash asset there. So they've got money to do some things. Uh, they've got a strategy. I'll prove the strategy works. Uh, the implementation will depend on exactly what they assign it to. The amount of time will depend on exactly what they're inside to do. But, uh, I believe, my opinion is, is that those buildings are going to be utilized. I don't, right now, I'm seeing one of them coming down. Uh, I see a path to utilizing all of those buildings, even the hospital. Look, you, you gotta make money in the hospital. Right now, right now, it's a sixty thousand dollar a month overhead to keep security, to keep electricity, to keep draft money, to keep the operating systems up. It's sixty grand a month anyway you look at it. It is expensive. And you're not going to just go in that building and put anything and have that kind of overhead. You've got to do it with something that generates enough revenue to pay that kind of overhead. And that's one thing that makes the VA transitional somewhat plausible because, you know, that's a contractual thing. You can almost immediately start generating a revenue. But it's an expensive building to operate, so you've got to have something that generates revenue. If you don't, it's gotta be subsidized. And, um, subsidization with public tax money is going to be difficult to get through the trust.
Pros- prospect sound good. Uh, is the trustees thought to retain ownership of the properties?
Oh, well, you gotta remember, they are a public entity. I don't think that there's any, uh, I don't think there's a safety to go out with them about keeping the properties. I think it's really a matter of who can dispose the property to and how. What they did not want to do, Charlie, they didn't want to just say, look, rather than tear it down, will anybody give us a dime for this building? Let's just say somebody come along and bought it for a hundred grand. Needless to say, there are people who would do that just because of the venture aspect. But then the concern was, well, what happens if they realize that they're stuck with it? They'd rather walk away from a hundred grand. We've seen that here before, like see. And now we're gonna have a building that might be under private ownership, but now it's gone. And they're there. And that becomes an eyesore. Now we're right back to the problem we didn't want. And yet we've lost control as to how to deal with it. So they didn't want that. And they didn't want a building there that wasn't being used that would impact what they could do with other properties. You know, the area is looking extremely good. The city made an investment there with the parks. Um, there are other things planned in the general areas. I think the city's going a little bit in that direction, and they want to be supportive of that, but they want to be supportive in the highway.
But do you see a possibility that we enter into a venture with the VA or the government without having to give the building to Hope Bridges?
Yeah, it'll be a lease. Uh, they cannot give the building to Hope Bridges. My understanding from a legal aspect, in current restrictions that law, it'll be a lease. And the authority expects there to be a lease payment. In other words, it's not gonna be a triple net lease with you not paying a tax or dime. And that's not what they're proposing to do. They, they want, they want a lease payment made. And the reason they want a lease payment made is if you look at the authority's budget, what they've always done is they've taken and paid operating costs out of lease payments. Out of annual taxes, but I don't want to be paying taxes. They've always done it out of lease payment side. So as, as a clock-time executive director, well, I got paid to come out of lease payment. Your money, but it's not tax money. It's not annual award. Uh, all of the annual award money went directly to, went directly to the medical programs and et cetera that the authority provided. And, um, you know, the idea one day is to get to a point that they're not doing any of that. They don't have to do it. Most people thought that when the federal government passed the Affordable Healthcare Act, that would end that. Like, anybody can get qualified. Why would you go down here and need assistance from the taxpayers when you can just apply for the Affordable Healthcare Program? Well, where the federal government, in my opinion, made the mistake in analyzing that is they forgot to consider how people would feel about the deductibles and the COFAS. Now, look, you, you can take the poorest guy in the world, send him and run, and say, look, you qualify for the Affordable Healthcare Plan. You don't need our program. Let's help you. They get to the point, they realize that a family deductible is ten dollars a plan, sixty-five hundred and ten thousand dollars. And they may have ten, fifteen, twenty-five dollar COFAs. They will not put their signature on that application. I've watched it hundreds of times. So that was kind of the whole issue with that. Now, as far as the medical assistance program of the authority goes, technically, if you qualify for any other program, you don't qualify for that program. So if you're Medicare, Medicaid, Medicare, Medicaid eligible, you got private insurance, you need any of that, you don't qualify for that program. That is a safety net program. Now, they're all qualified to be over 12. They turn that occasionally, unless if they can't get to more than they're to.
Any comments? Thank you, Dale. I, I appreciate it. It's a lot more clearing than all the information I've been hearing.
So, yeah, if you, uh, if you want more information, then I suggest you, you can give us a call or send it to me. Um, a lot of opinions I hear about what should and shouldn't happen with the building, what should and shouldn't happen with the authority, what should and shouldn't happen with the cash reserves. There's merit in all of those, Pete. I truly believe there is. But the only way either to address problem is to try and break them down into their smallest components and address them one at a time. So a lot of that stuff that I hear in the system, uh, I think needs to be addressed, I really do. But I don't think it comes before addressing like, let's quit spending sixty thousand a month. Get somebody in the building that can use it and pay the overhead. Let's get that done, and then let's address the problem too.
Yeah, just, as an outsider, it was just hard to swallow when you're reading about giving the building away and then giving millions of dollars on top of that. It was like, wait, there's gotta be another option here.
They, uh, but some of those, you know, we all think of it. I certainly believe this. I'd love to see the college, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'd love to see them bring.
It seemed like a, a really good fit, except for the money.
And, you know, you may recall that the authority had given the city, the West City, some lots that were potentially in New City Hall, and it looks like the city's taking it in their direction. Uh, I think if those lots come back to the authority, they may possibly offer them to the college. If the college would so like them, to look at having a downtown campus, maybe have a new building. Um, there's a benefit to all of us for that to happen. So we don't want to swelter. Can't say enough about the need to support Meridian. I don't know that what, it was obvious to me that what Meridian wanted to do in a campus was not setting well just because of what, you know, the type of thing that it is. That does not mean that there's not a very, very necessary and needed service.
Absolutely. But when, when it was mentioned regional, it was like.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I didn't, I did discuss. Yeah, I, I, you know, I didn't, I did discuss it with any of the trustees, but anybody that was there and read the room, you could tell that that was a compromise.
Sure. Um, any other comments? Anything from Jennifer?
One other thing I, I neglected to mention. I know, right? You just heard my, heard my wheels turning. Um, if you notice, there's a couple of magazines on the counter. If, um, any, anyone's interested, I've got it flagged. But Florida Trend is, um, the economic development, i- if you will, magazine for the, the state. This goes out to businesses, to EDOs, to state, to communities all across the state and other, other states as well. However, they did a, a rural community feature in this magazine. So I've got it flagged on ours, of course, but if you get a chance, um, these are only copies I have left. Anyone's welcome to them if you'd like them. But, uh, just wanted to point out if you wanted to take a, a minute to flip through and, and look at our entry in, in the rural edition of Florida Trend, it's, it's here. That, that was the last thing I.
All right. Next advertised meeting is August tenth. We'll await Jennifer's response to the, uh, combination meeting, uh, seminar. And, um, at that point, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
How many motions?
Second. I'm in favor. Motion's carried.